The meeting of the Shreveport City Council has not been called to order. Councilman James Green will give invocation and Councilman Flurry will lead us in the pledge.
Let's say it. Thank you, God, for this day and thank you for this opportunity. We actually had come in our midst and let us handle this meeting for the good of the citizens of the city and let us handle it in a Christlike manner. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please face the flag for the people of me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilman Bradford.
President.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Here.
Councilman Nicholson.
Here.
Councilman Flurry.
Here.
Councilman Green.
Here.
And Councilman Bowles.
Here. Tomorrow, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference on the 11th, March 11, and the meeting on March 12. Does any council member have any awards or distinguished guests that I'd like to recognize at this time? Councilman Bradford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, while the issue that my guest is going to speak on is on the agenda, I would like for him to come up now. He's going to have to leave, but I want him to come up and share with the council his very important legislation, number 37. So I'd like Mr. Art Walker, who's the president of Communication Unlimited, to come on up, Art. And Art and I have been talking regarding hemp project and I asked him to come and give the counsel because I'm going to offer some legislation to support this at the legislature. But if you mind, just identify yourself and tell us what would you like, why we think you think we should pass this legislation.
Thank you, Councilman. My name is Arthur Walker. I'm the president of the Louisiana Hemp Alliance, excuse me, allergies. And the Louisiana Hemp Alliance is sponsoring a bill in the Louisiana Legislature this year that hopes to legalize hemp as a commodity for growth in Louisiana, growth, production, and marketing in Louisiana. The economics of this crop, which has been become a legal crop to grow in Louisiana as of the 2018 Farm Bill, is phenomenal and it gives our farmers and our commercial business people the opportunity to participate in what is being characterized as an economic boom for small communities and generally for the United States. Hemp is a product that has been grown as a commercial product for millennia but has not been grown in the United States for the past 70 years. But with the passage of the 2018 Farm Bill, that changed completely. And with that, projections for 2022, the production and use of industrial hemp or hemp is projected to be $2.6 billion. Without legislation of the type that we have proposed for the Louisiana Legislature and for people in Louisiana, Louisianians will not participate in that opportunity. As of right now, 41 states have also passed legislation that would allow those states' citizens to participate in this. Louisiana is not one of those states. And so I appreciate infinitely the opportunity and the pleasure Mr. Bradford has offered in recognizing Shreveport, having Shreveport recognize the economic importance of having hemp grown in Louisiana and produced and marketed by our state. And I'm available for any questions that anyone may have. I've also passed out some information to give you some brief information about hemp and I'm available at any time to answer anyone's questions. The legislature does not convene until the 8th of April, but in between that time, we are working very hard to get all of our legislators in line to make sure that hemp becomes part of the economic fiber of Louisiana, just like corn, cotton, soybean, rice, and everything else that we grow here.
Okay, let me just express again my appreciation for you taking the lead on this and introducing it around the state. The reason I was interested in Caddo and Shreveport is that we don't have the luxury of overlooking or not looking seriously at any project or any initiative that would add economic development to our area. This product could be grown just about anywhere, is that right?
That is correct.
And Caddo would be a very attractive market for farmers.
It would be ideal. And to the point of being able to grow it here, Louisiana has some strategic advantages over some of the other states that have gotten out ahead of us, like Kentucky, Tennessee, Washington State, Oregon. Those states can only grow it once a year. Most of it is being grown indoors in Louisiana because of its growth pattern. It's a 90 to 95-day growth from seed to harvesting. We should be able to get three grows, which makes us ideally, an ideal place for manufacturers. I am going on this Friday to Colorado to the largest hemp festival convention in the world, in Denver, and to do my efforts to recruit businesses and to learn as much more about the whole process of processing hemp.
Now, when you made a presentation last week and I was a part of that audience, you described some products that could be made from this vegetation. What is some of those, you think?
Well, just about everything in this room can be made from hemp, everything except the light bulbs. And they are now experimenting with making computer chips out of hemp. The economy of China has put forth $17 billion in hemp marketing research to be the lead in AI production. And the cornerstone of that AI production is industrial hemp. But everything that you see in this room, from what you're sitting on to the plastics that are in front of you with your name tags on it, all of that stuff can be made. The American flag, the first American flag was made from hemp. The Constitution, the working document that they worked on was made from hemp. All of those products are made from hemp. And hemp is available in stores right now. It's just that in the past, we've not been able to grow it in the United States. Most of the hemp that we have used in the United States as a soap, as food, as other kinds of cleaning products and things of that nature were imported from Canada, France, China, and Russia. Those countries, a couple of those countries are not considered friends of ours, but we have had to buy our products from those countries, which also affect our trade imbalance. So if we can grow it in Louisiana and we can grow it, matter of fact, Senator Wyden of Oregon indicated that, and he was one of the key people who had the 2018 Farm Bill passed, his motto was, "If I can buy it in my grocery store, I should be able to grow it on my farms." And that is the truth.
That's true. Well, listen, I appreciate you and I, when I heard your presentation, I really went back and researched it and I was amazed at the variety and the diversity of this product. So I'm going to escort the council to just send our support. I mean, this is just a resolution to add our support to the legislature to approve the product of this.
I thank you, Councilman Bradford. I thank the mayor and I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for recognizing. My question is for Councilman Bradford. Councilman Bradford, this is a product that you can smoke?
No, sir. It has, it's a cousin to a smoking product, but this is not a...
Speak loud, man. We can hear you down there.
No, it's not recommended.
You said your cousin's cousin smoked it?
It's a cousin to an item that's similar in appearance, but it's not that item.
Okay, but thank you.
Is that right, Mr.?
By law, sir. Hemp is defined as 0.3% THC, which THC is the part of the cousin part that would make you...
Be careful when you use the word cousin around Councilman Bradford because he has a cousin that I, you know, I'm concerned about they may have tried it. But you cannot smoke it, is that what you're saying?
You cannot get high from it, yes, sir.
But you can smoke it.
There are people who have tried.
Thank you.
Now, Councilman mentioned that I may have had a cousin that may have tried it. He can confirm that, he just thought he would mention that to me.
But they didn't inhale, I'm sure.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I see, I do see, I didn't want to overlook Commissioner Matthew Lane. I didn't know this today. If you had something you wanted to speak on, I wanted to call you up now.
Oh, thank you. I can speak now? Does the, will y'all turn the overhead on, please?
It should be on.
You want to press a button?
No, it's on.
Okay. Oh, there it is, thank you. I came here today to thank the city council and to thank the administration for something that my wife and I worked on with Councilwoman Fuller and with Malcolm Statlander. There's a local business in town, they've been here, it's a manufacturing company, they've been in business quietly for 73 years, making safety glasses like this and then also glasses like this where you drill through the lens. And they rely on water for lubrication on their grinding. They just take the plastic lens and they grind it. And they were worried because they're open Monday through Friday, that the leak in front of their building would shut their business down, which would put them behind and put them at a disadvantage. So my wife and I reached out to Councilwoman Fuller and to Malcolm Statlander both and just said, "How can we get this done on a Saturday?" So this last Saturday, just the day before yesterday, when people were enjoying the Gumbo Gladiators downtown and the Crawfish Festival, we're very proud to say that the city workers, at least in truck number 4193, were line-boring underneath the street so that this could be taken care of on a Saturday morning so that Monday, today, they could open up their door and continue to pay their taxes and manufacture for companies as far east Texas, Monroe, southern Arkansas, and even middle to south Louisiana, and a lot of shops locally that they ship to and sell to. And so, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Fuller, and thank you, Malcolm Statlander, for this. The small businesses appreciate things and this might seem small, but this is really, that was really a big thing and it meant a lot that they didn't have to close their doors for the line to be replaced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Truck number 4193. Okay? Any other council member? No? Mayor Perkins, you have any awards or recognition, distinguished guests at this time?
I do. I want to introduce the new Assistant C.A.O. Casey Brown is sitting behind me. Casey has a bachelor's degree in business management from Northwestern University. He's previously worked as a financial service specialist at Regions Bank before being promoted to Assistant Bank Manager. He'll be working with C.A.O. Jones on the budget and just assisting her with work as the C.A.O. So I want to introduce him and welcome him to the team. I want to talk about, oh, you want to, you want to say something?
Say the name one more time.
Casey, Casey Brown. Casey Brown. Got it. Also want to talk about crime statistics a little bit. This week, you should have got an email from Chief Raymond about the crime numbers. Last month, we saw a decline of 18% compared to last year's January. This month, we've seen, February, sorry, we saw a decline of 6%, but you know, it's not about the numbers with our administration. We're also getting out into the neighborhoods as well and making sure that people know that our police presence is there and that know that we're working around the clock to keep them safe. This week, no, sorry, the first week of April, myself and Chief Raymond will be in the Queensborough neighborhood and Councilman Bowman, I shot you an email today to see if you would like to join us with a walk over there.
Yes, sir.
So just wanted to touch on that. And LSU's debate team isn't here today. We do want to get them in to congratulate them, but right now, we want to wish them luck. They're ranked number two in the country right now for a debate. So right here at home, the debate team is doing really well and representing Shreveport well. The last note I have, Councilman Bowman, is I want to give the Best Dress Award to Councilman Flurry today. He came dressed and pressed to beat his buddy, Councilman Bradford. So congratulations.
All right. Well, congratulations to you, Mr. Flurry. And Casey Brown, we expect a great work from you and welcome you aboard also. I have, just going back one more time, but I saw two good friends of mine I know that I want to recognize. I think they're here for something else, but I did want to speak to Mr. and Mrs. Early, Ms. Katrina and Mr. Demetrius Early, Queen of State Farm. I know that Flurry wanted to introduce them, but I had to beat you to the punch. Those are my friends. All right, Mr. Green, we have, anyone has anything relative to property standards for Mr. Green? No. Just glad to see you walk down, Mr. Green. Appreciate you. Mr. Clark, we have a master plan report from you tomorrow. Looks like you was ready to bring it today, but we can wait, we can wait till tomorrow. And there will be, we got some papers from Ms. Jones, a budget to ask for a report.
That'll come at the next meeting.
Okay. And Ms. Jones, is there any legislation to be added tomorrow?
Not that we're aware of.
All right. We do have the bottom request to speak.
John Settle for Tillwood. I would like to note that one reason Mr. Flurry won the award is that he has a hat that I handed down to him. Not the bowtie, but that hat. I wanted to speak quickly on Resolution 36. I think it's good that you look at your rules and kind of update them, save time, but I do have a real concern about the provision. I'm looking at the fact sheet, says, "All public comments on any matter of public concern, regardless of whether or not the item is on the agenda, shall be made at the beginning of the meeting." First off, I think a resolution that makes a major change in your rules should really lay over for two weeks. I know y'all can adopt this as a one-reader tomorrow, but this is a major change and I really think you should think about it. So number one, I hope you don't vote on it tomorrow unless you amend it. Secondly, if you allow everybody to speak at the beginning, your meeting's not going to really start until quarter to four or four. And I've sat out here plenty of times and I know that the fatigue it must take on y'all because I certainly get tired of it and I see eyes glaze over after a while. But I think that's really going to delay the subsequent part of your meetings, which is really important. And the meetings that are on the agenda, they should stay where? At the end. But I want to point out something maybe even more important, and I gave the copies to, I didn't bring enough for all the council, but I did give it to the city attorney and Assistant City Attorney. The open records, the open meeting law, which just was provided to me by somebody, says that, only says that people are guaranteed the right to speak on meetings prior to action on an agenda item. Open meetings law only guarantees the right to speak before you vote on an agenda item. The Attorney General, and I've given a copy of this A.G. opinion, this is Jeff Landry, makes the comment that "The public may adopt reasonable rules to restrict comment. Many public bodies have adopted rules that place a timely on comments," you have that, "and require that comments must relate to items on the agenda." You don't even have to have, let people speak on anything they want to. And I kind of support that idea. People can address you all by email, by letter, by calling you. I'm a little tired of hearing Sammy talk twice, especially on irrelevant matters. I'm sorry, and I'd say that if Sammy were here. And some of the other people enjoy talking on things, but you're not even required to allow people to speak if it's not on the agenda. And other public bodies are restricting that right. But at the minimum, I wish you'd think about this, maybe hold off before you adopt it tomorrow, but I think it's really bad to have all the speakers at the front end for the efficiency of the meeting.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fuller?
This could be a one-time-only thing, but I kind of agree with him that we should at least, that we should at least move this to vote on in two weeks and think it through. But I actually appreciate that we allow people to speak on things that are not agenda items or else some of the constituents in my district, and I'm kind of proud that quite often they are from my district, and some of them are here today, like Ms. Anderson, who brings up situations that we wouldn't ordinarily be looking at, and then we're able to discuss those like later in committee. Or Mr. Murphy, who's coming in right now, not to call you out, but he often brings us information that is substantial that we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have on the top of our heads to actually consider. And I think that what it does to public discourse is it gives us the proper, it gives us the proper arena for it where anyone watching on Facebook or that goes back and watches it on our meetings on the website has an opportunity to think those things through and bring them back to us so we can get movement on things that aren't just a part of our business-as-usual agenda. I probably have more to say about it, but that's enough. I think I would have passed out for agreeing with him in the first place.
All right.
That was a joke.
Oh. Councilman Bowles?
Mr. Settle, are you saying that if we move this to the end as opposed to the beginning, that's what you suggest?
I suggest you leave your rules the same.
Just leave them the way they are.
That if you can speak at the front end on agenda items today at work session, it's my understanding you can only speak on agenda items tomorrow at the record meeting, you can speak on agenda items at the front end. And on the back end, I can talk to you about going over Holy Angels or coming to, oh, across the lines or all those other things.
Right.
So I would suggest that you keep the rules the same if you don't want to limit comments on any matter, but I don't think it'd be a good idea efficiency-wise to have them all at the front end. Also, things you call the hardship for the media, I don't, I don't work for a TV station, but they usually have early deadlines for stories and you don't really start the real meeting before 3:45 or 4:00 because of all that, it's going to delay a lot of things.
I think that, I think that with the, with internet and the mechanisms we have in place now with email, that I kind of agree that maybe one time is not that bad of an idea, but I also don't ever want to stifle anybody from being able to give their opinion and talk to us because that's what we're here for. So I guess one question is, could, could some of the other items be discussed at this meeting and then keep the substantive conversations at the council meeting? Could that happen? Where, I mean, if we just spoke on agenda items at the council meeting itself, and can't do it?
Because there are people that come tomorrow that might not be here today and there are people that come twice. And the other thing, though, is y'all are going to quit, y'all are going to quit picking on Sammy. Sammy might be eccentric to some of you, but he's one of us. And his former minister reminded me of that on Friday. And so I think that y'all need to realize that we're all human and that he has as much right to tell us about, I mean, if he keeps it to three minutes, he can talk about G.I. Joe or Gomer Powell or whatever because he also brings a lot to the table and thinks about things in a different way. So y'all are going to stop. That's all.
Well, I just was asking if it could be kind of condensed a little bit. I'm not saying take Sammy's right away for speaking at all. I even gave him some fun facts the last time he spoke.
We could, if we do take away your opportunity to speak only at the end on things that are not on the agenda, then maybe we give you longer to speak, four minutes, five minutes, to get all your ideas across?
I think we'll just leave it the way it is.
No, we won't be doing that.
Let me just say this, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Bradford?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to honor my, my actual comments to the agenda item when we get to 36, but I just wanted to, to Attorney, Attorney Settle. I mean, I mean, we are new council. There has been councils that have stayed here till 8 o'clock at night. I have seen, this is the people's house. This is the people's chambers and I would never, ever do anything to not make this a citizens-friendly chamber, number one. I've seen us on a council day have people sign in at 3 o'clock. We'll meet until 6:30, ask them to come in to speak, and half of them leave. That's not fair to them. It's not, it's not, all other bodies, the parish commission, the city, the school board have their public comments prior to their agenda items. I have no problem with the legislation, but I'm just saying, when we have citizens who want to express themselves and they show up here at 3 o'clock and we carry on our, our meeting, which is, again, I have no problem with us fully discussing any item that we need to make a decision on, but oftentimes, if we're here till 6 o'clock, that means that a citizen has sit out there for three hours and they usually can't stay that long. And then on the other hand, we have people who saying, "We need to change our meeting time to 5 o'clock." Okay? So, 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 so there's, there's a lot of different things that we can add to, to this conversation, but I'm just saying that, that we have to consider who we, who we work for, who put us here. And we can never stifle or give them the impression that they are not welcome in this house. And this item, I'll speak on it when we get to that item, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Fuller?
That was it? Thank you.
All right. I have, it's not on here. Oh, Doc Montgomery?
Hello, Doc Montgomery, 124 Merrick Street. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Here to speak about the $8 garbage fee again. One of the things that was not brought up at the last time that I was here was just seeing better coordination between, and not to say that the coordination is bad, but I'm saying better coordination between the parish commission and the city council for the purposes of this. Well, nobody likes their trash not being picked up, right? Okay? And we talk about the issues with juvenile delinquents, right? And they need something to do. If we're going to implement a fee, then how do we, how do we kill two birds with one stone? How do we kill the bird that, how do we kill, how do we make sure that we have our trash being picked up, we have the money that's required for the budget so that we're not running into any deficits? And then how do we also utilize the talent that we have here to make sure that we get everything that we need done? I think, you know, one of the problem, one of the issues that we see in the juvenile court system is that, you know, we're dealing with diversion programs and trying to keep children out of incarceration. And I think that this would be a great opportunity for jobs training for juvenile delinquents that are here in the city and also provide a great service to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have ordinance 90.
Mr. Taylor, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I think that he wants to speak tomorrow, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, on tomorrow, all right.
So we need to hold on to his card.
Okay. Do that. Okay, we have the following executive appointments to be considered tomorrow.
Chairman Bowman, Mayor, the council, I just wanted to make just a short point about ordinance 31. This is the ordinance that's before you for introduction, and it's been an ordinance that has gotten some misinformation and some confusion. This is the 8, 500 block of East Kings Highway, and it's a rezoning application from R-17 to C-1. And it's a situation where this piece of property was rezoned years ago under the old section 106 of the ordinance. And during that time, just for informational purposes, we rezoned properties with an extended use. And what an extended use did was take the base zoning, which was R-1D, and and extended the use to reach in and allow for B-1 and B-2 uses. And this piece of property at that time got a R-1D extended use approval, and we also had a developmental step at that time that said that a person had to develop the property within two years, or they lost that right. And at that time, the MPC determined that the person had developed the property and had the rights for the commercial use. But when the Unified Development Code was enacted, the extended uses were eliminated, and those rights were taken away, those rights were removed. And in this case, a person that if the board had zoned the property B-1 like commercial, the B-1 rights that are now C-1 would have still been at the property, but by the extended uses being eliminated, that person lost those extended rights, and therefore, the person is back before you. So basically, just for informational purposes, you're looking at property that was already zoned for the uses that are being asked for on your agenda, and we're just trying to phase the UDC into what existed. And as you know, in some instances, the UDC downzoned some properties from, say, heavy industrial to heavy commercial, and in those things, in those cases, we have reestablished those rights because it took away certain rights, and in this case, it's just a matter of, it was a transitional occurrence in the ordinance that have us at this present state before you.
Councilman Boach.
Mr. Clark, I've taken some calls from the property owner, and I really hadn't got any real negative calls or feedback about it. Just for a little history, and you might be able to follow up since you were there, this is the entrance to the haven, which is, there's a property up to the right. I think that Mr. Lock had always intended to be an out parcel, similar to what you have at 12 Oaks, or Providence, or something like that, for a dry cleaner, or a restaurant, or something to that extent, and I think he'd intended at one point, once he got, I think he told me 75 to 80 percent full, that he was going to build there, and he never did, and now he's wanting to list that property to put it on, and I don't even think that he realized that it had been downzoned until he went to list it. So, I mean, I think we're just going back and doing a little house cleaning with this.
And that's pretty well, we had a long and lengthy conversation with Mr. Lock, when he found out that he could not develop the property commercially, and because he wanted to do what was right and in order, instead of, you know, going through the argument, the challenges that he had these rights, he readily agreed to reapply, to have the property rezoned again, in order to do the things that he initially started to do when he started the development of the haven. When he developed the haven, I think, were two houses there, and now they're in excess of 400 to 500 homes, so now he's ready to come back and complete that process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Okay, thank you. We have the following executive appointments to be considered tomorrow. Field Ops Superintendent, is Herman Hill here today? All right. I think they were missing you last meeting. Everybody was, somebody said you was invisible man.
Say it again, sir.
Had one of my council members say they thought you was invisible.
They did. I am factual, alive, and well, here today. So I'd like to thank everybody for their time, and give them praises to God, who is worthy of all praises. My name is Herman Hill III. I'm originally from Oil City, Louisiana. I've been in the water and wastewater business for about 30 years. Currently hold the highest water and wastewater license in Louisiana and also the United States. So I would appreciate the consideration for this appointment from the mayor and the council, if this afforded to me. I'd like any questions that you may have for me.
All right. Councilman Baffler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. See, and I didn't bring my package of questions in your resume, but let me ask you, what was your previous job?
Actually, my current job right now is, I'm an account manager for Suez Water Technologies and Solutions out of Paris, France.
Sure.
Formerly GE Water and Process Technologies. For the past 14 years, I've visited all over the United States and up to 140 different countries, dealing with water and any type of process technologies.
So, in your expertise, what do you think, what do you feel you can offer to Shreveport that would help us?
I think that I could lead by example, provide some motivation to the department, and also give a little inspiration to the guys, to give them a little, I guess, a little pride in the department. You know, water sometimes is, I say, the least respected utility, but probably the most needed. You know, everybody, if they don't have any electricity, you know, they'll go crazy. If they don't have any gas, they'll go crazy, but, you know, water is pennies on the dollar. They'll go in the store and pay for a dollar bottle of water, $2 bottle of water, but seven, eight cents on the dollar for a gallon of water, but as soon as they don't have that water, then you hear big crying and complaints. So just want to bring a little dignity to the department, a little motivation and inspiration for the guys in field operations. I hear some that is a little bit of morale, but I just want to say, look, I'm just a little country boy from Oil City. The Lord has blessed me. I've been all over the United States, up to 165 different countries, and anything is possible.
See, I appreciate, I appreciate you saying what you're saying, but I was looking for a little bit more than motivation. I mean, I don't think we need to have that as your primary job. What specifically do you feel you can bring forth to Shreveport to help improve our quality of waters?
Sir, I think that, I know that we're under consent decree, and, you know, we have mains and stuff that needs fixing, and make sure that the guys have the right mindset and focus on priorities to lead, to make sure the citizens and our system has, you know, stability in.
Let me ask you, why you're not already employed, have you researched, became familiar with our water system here?
I have. I've done some research on it, and I understand that sometimes it's not a focal point for people to brag and talk about, so I just want to bring some pride back to the city of Shreveport for the water department, and some integrity, and that we're out there, we're doing our job, and we're doing what we're supposed to do for the citizens.
Well, again, I was prepared to speak with you at the last meeting, but I just want to say this, that you work at the pleasure of the mayor, and he has the right to, and I told him this, that he certainly have the right to recommend who he feel is qualified and capable of doing the job, but it's our job to make sure that we confirm people, that they are indeed prepared to add value to what the city is in need of.
Sure.
So, thank you for coming and offering yourself, and I'm going to trust that you're going to be a very, very worthy addition to this department.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Y.
Thank you.
Okay. We've already, I think, talked to Don Harvey.
Reverend? Yeah, we talked to Don. I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I mistook you for somebody.
He missed you, Kelly. He touched you.
Chairman, what blue eyes you have. Chairman, what blue eyes you have.
Y'all messing with me. Don't make me have to get on y'all neck.
Yes.
Did we also talk to Ms. Lawler, believe, and Charles Henderson, and Sandy is here, and I believe we all know Sandy. Did anyone want to speak to Sandy Seminole?
We should at least offer her an opportunity.
Sandy, would you like to come and say greetings?
Mr. Chairman, would you ask all those who have not been interviewed by us to come up?
Okay. Any of the referees that haven't been for the council would like to come forward at this time, please do so.
So, Council, I just want to, Council, I want to add, this is the Workforce Development Board. These are just reconfirmations. All of them have served on this board before, but I just want to give some context.
I'm the new baby. So basically, I am Sandy Seminole, I'm Senior Vice President for Community Bank of Louisiana, and I've been asked to serve on the Workforce Development Board. I'm excited about it strictly because of the fact that I also was served with Step Forward, which we work from cradle to 23, to the youth, to get them ready for workforce, and to go to school and get the education, and now having the ability to work for the grants and work with the adults, as well as our children. I think it's a phenomenal opportunity, so. I'm around, grew up in Bossier City, married an Italian who didn't know where Bossier was, so in '77, I moved to Shreveport, and I've been here ever since, and I try to keep these two out of trouble, Mr. Radford and Mr. Bowman, but that's a really hard deal. And I'm very, I'm very upset that my city councilman is not here today.
Sandy, you didn't mean Mr. Bowman-Florey, did you?
I meant Mr. Florey. I'm just reading. I'm nervous. I'm nervous.
Willie needing to answer on that lawn, too.
Yeah, that lawn, we can do that. And I am disappointed that my city councilman's not here today, and I will text him when I leave, and that's why he wasn't here, because I was here. So anyway, I hope I have your support. I look forward to serving with the rest of the board members and everyone.
Yeah, Chairman Bowman had to step out a minute.
No, I'm not picking about him. I'm picking about Nicholson.
He's out of town.
He's my city councilperson.
He's out of town. We sent him over to Hilton, head South Carolina to look at some property and things.
Make excuses for him. So anyway, don't want to take your own time, but just thank you for the opportunity. If you choose, just let me serve, and I promise I'll do a very good job.
Well, you've served on about every committee down here, haven't you?
Not on the city, not on the city. I think when I worked under Hightower, I may, I stirred up too much, so I hadn't much sense then. But I served on most boards, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I want to vouch for the Sandy Seminole's work with Step Forward, because he's served on the leadership council together. But he's, Councilman Nicholson's at a family wedding. That's the truth of it. We didn't sit in the meeting.
Okay, who's next?
All these are work for you.
Greetings. Good to see you. And be sure, and tell them what district you live in.
Your district, right? Good evening. Honored to Mayor Perkins and Chairperson Bowman and the City Council. So pretty much know everyone around the table. Katrina Early, and been in the city for over 20 years, and State Farm agent here in the city for over 20 years, and we have a nonprofit over nine and a half years, and I've been actually working with the Workforce Investment Committee for, Governor Jindo appointed me in 2009 to work on the Investment Workforce Board, and Mayor Glover appointed me in 2013 to work with the city, and I have been with the city thus far.
Thank you. We appreciate you continuing to serve.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Y, what do you see as the potential of this board? I mean, we, I trust Ms. Moore, and she's phenomenal, but a lot of the citizens are not too familiar with what we're doing, and how can we make that more visible, and what do you see the potential? You've been serving for a couple of years, right?
Yes. This is my first year as chairperson.
Oh, you're chairperson?
Yes.
Congratulations.
And I appreciate that. Thank you. And what I would like to say, with working with Ms. Bunny and Mr. Herman, and as far as me being chairperson, my vision as chairperson is for, one, for us to make sure we understand our roles and duties, and for, two, to make sure that we will carry out the vision of this city. So whatever you all want us to do, you sit down and you talk to me, and as long as I have a board behind me and support behind me, we're going to make it happen.
Fantastic. Well, we certainly going to have that conversation.
Yes, sir. I'm ready for it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to give you and your husband the Best Dress in the Audience Award.
All right, our twins. Any questions?
I believe that's it.
Okay. Thank you all for the opportunity.
Okay. Do we have someone, next person, please?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Susan Evans, and I work for Libby Glass, and I'm also on the Workforce Development Board. And Mayor Perkins called me specifically and asked me whether I would serve again on the board. I've been serving for several years.
Good. Any questions from the council?
Just one. What do you see, I feel, that has been accomplished in your term on the board?
I feel that there's been a lot of training that's been approved, and I think that we're heading in another direction as far as trying to get businesses to have a place for the youth to come to work instead of being on the street, and so that we're working on that program right now, amongst other types of programs, too.
Great. Thank you for your service, and certainly, we are in a different chapter of Shreveport, and we have the superior part of that.
Thank you.
And thank the mayor for calling you.
Thank you, Mr. Y. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Robin Foley. I work for McElroy Metal and have been on the Workforce Development Board for the past three years. I was originally appointed by Mayor Glover, and then served under Mayor Tyler, and then I, too, received a call from Mr. Adrian, Mayor Perkins, asking if I would continue, and I accepted, so that's why I'm here.
So in fact, that you agreed to continue, you feel positive about the direction of the board?
I do.
And what are some of the, what is your vision from this new chapter?
Well, one of the things that I've seen is the ACT Work Keys and some of those other initiatives, and just from the manufacturing, being from the public sector in manufacturing, feel that those programs, moving forward, are very good for our youth and to go into the manufacturing and other, be employed and have those opportunities through, in school, to be able to get their certification and go on to be successful.
Again, thank you for your service. I, again, very familiar with the director and Mr. Vitale, who carries on these responsibilities, but I'm trusting that you guys have worked with them diligently, and the progress will come.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you.
I think that's it. It's Debbie, is Debbie McCollum there?
I think it's everybody.
That's it? Okay. All right, there are no items on the consent agenda to be adopted. Ms. Jones, can you proceed with regular agenda legislation?
Resolution number 33 is employing professionals with respect to the issuance by the City of Shreveport of not exceeding $100 million of water and sewer revenue bonds in one or more series, for the purpose of paying the cost of making additions, extensions, and improvements to the combined drinking water and wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal system of the city. Resolution 35 is employing professionals with respect to the issuance by the City of Shreveport of not exceeding $20 million of taxable water and sewer revenue bonds in one or more series, for the purpose of paying the cost of making additions, extensions, and improvements to the combined drinking water and wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal system of the city. Resolution 36 is amending portions of Section 1 of the Shreveport, Louisiana City Council Rules of Procedure. Resolution 37 is to request Louisiana Legislature to legalize the cultivation of hemp. Resolution 38 is authorizing the mayor to waive the fee to operate human-powered inflatables at the annual Cross Lake Flotilla event. Resolution 40 is to recognize and congratulate Angie White for being named Act Workforce Champion for the state of Louisiana.
All right. Councilman Baffler?
Mr. Y, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Let me first mention that my actual council on tomorrow to postpone Resolution 38, we need to do a little bit more research on that item. It won't delay the event, the event is not scheduled until June, so we have time to be clear on how, on what it is that we're going to waive. There was a couple of things that I saw that, and I think the city attorney as well, that we may need to spend a little bit more time researching. But in regards to, in regards to 33 and 35, Mr. Mayor, we was, at the last meeting, we was encouraged to go ahead and allow these professional, whoever wants to engage, to go ahead and make the application. Do you see delay in this as, in being in any way, creating a, an impediment to the process?
No. Well, we would like for these professionals to continue to work. We have, we submitted the application to the State Bond Commission, and that meeting is next month. So we would like to make sure that they are engaged in time enough for us to be able to meet that meeting. It's the third Thursday of April.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, so, Mr. Washington, you want to speak on that?
I was going to apologize, councilman, you switched gears on me. I thought you were talking about the inflatable. Resolution 38.
Oh, no, no, we're fine.
Council, Mayor, we currently set for a State Bond Commission meeting on April 18.
18, okay.
So that's third Thursday. If we delay this, and I think there is some more legislation that you may propose to introduce, that would cause a problem with the deadlines meeting.
Okay. So, the applications have been submitted, those who want to participate.
Correct. And as you well know, when we're completing the bond transaction, the work started some time ago. So, we started back in January to meet these deadlines, we met with the FA and administration, and we set a calendar, and we're trying to meet those deadlines.
Okay, all right. I just want to be clear on tomorrow that we need to move forward expeditionally so we can continue to be in, at least in the compliance of meeting those April, April 18 date. Okay. I just want to be clear, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Fuller?
I wanted to speak about something else, but what you're saying is that if we delayed this, we'd be disturbing continuity, and if we were looking at RFP process, we'd actually be turning over somebody's work that y'all have actually been working on since January, basically?
Well, what I'm saying is, we have a State Bond Commission deadline, and if you're going to introduce a new ordinance for RFP process, that's going to be a two-reader. So you'll push everything back, and, you know, I think you heard Barbara speak last time about the deadlines, and what we're facing. I think the council can, you know, we got, I think possibly, two issues that's on the agenda now. If you want to review a RFP process in the future, you got plenty of time to do that.
But if we just jumped and did it now, we'd be, one, we'd be delaying our continuity, we'd be creating a hiccup in continuity, and we'd be basically trying to hand over the work y'all have been doing since January to somebody else.
To answer your question, yes.
All right, thank you. And the other thing is, I'll be, tomorrow, I'd like to introduce Ms. White as my guest early in the meeting, in regards to that Resolution 40, I'm just, it's a really exciting thing she's doing, and I'll speak on it in depth tomorrow, and let her explain what's going on. Thank you.
All right. And lastly, Ms. Chairman, I'm encouraged and exhortate council to support Resolution 37. I think you heard Mr. Walker, it doesn't, it's just a resolution of support to encourage the legislatures to, and I talked to our local, and they are down with the support of it, so let's, let's see if we bring some new industry into this area. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Jones, would you proceed? Introduction of Resolution.
Resolution 39 is authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Shreveport and Planet Aqua Group Foundation relative to affixing permanent storm drain markers on designated storm drains during an Ocean Day event in downtown Shreveport.
Okay. Ms. Lennis? I'm sorry, Ms. Krill? Attorney Krill, I'm sorry.
I realize this is not said to be adopted before April the ninth, but I do have some concerns that I need to dig into, specifically under the Article 6, dealing with contracts in the finance section of the ordinances. There's a provision that does not allow the city to enter into any contractual agreements with any organizations that may owe taxes, fees, monies, et cetera, to the city. So I need to do a deeper dive into this and make some contacts before anyone votes on this, and so I will send you guys a report, since I've had that conversation in detail.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Krill. There's no other questions or discussion on that. Ms. Jones, you can proceed with introduction of ordinance.
Ordinance 27 to repeal and replace Article 7 purchases in Chapter 26 Finance for the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordnances relative to purchases. Ordinance 28 to revise Chapter 105 Wireless Telecommunication Facilities of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordnances relative to small wireless facilities. Ordinance 29 is amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. Ordinance 30 is zoning case number C-11-19, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on both sides of Corporate Drive, northwest corner of Barton Drive, and Caddo Hulo Road, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from I-1 Heavy Industrial District to I-1 Light, I-1 Light Industrial District. Ordinance 31 is zoning case number C-17-19, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the east side of East Kings Highway, approximately 150 feet south of Captain H.M. Shreve Boulevard, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R-17 Single Family Residential District to C-1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
Okay. There's no discussion, I think.
Let me ask, Ms. Chairman, I'm sorry.
I knew Booch was deciding on his speech, so I was about to accomplish.
I just wanted to speak on the rezoning, I think we talked about on ordinance number 31. I believe that, like I said, that I would encourage everybody to vote for this. It seems that we're just kind of doing a little housekeeping more than anything, and I'd like to encourage everybody to vote for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Bradford?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, have you reviewed 27? Introduction, ordinance 27.
Yes, I have, I have, councilman.
You have any impression of the legislation?
I do. So we reviewed it and looked at the actual guidelines from the Code of Ordnance, and it says, unless and until otherwise provided by ordinance pursuant to Section 4.20 hereof, before making a purchase or contract, the purchasing agent shall give opportunity for competitive bidding under such rules. And it just made us refer to Section 4.2 of the language reference, and 4.2 starts off with, upon recommendation of the mayor. So the way that we're interpreting it is to keep it the way it has been before. It would have to take legislation to change this if we're going to put it out for bid, so.
So I guess my question is, is there any scenarios in which, again, let me, let me back up a minute. The authors of the charter was very, I thought, broad in how they structured the mayor's powers. Strong mayor, council, form of government. I'm very, I'm very careful and cautious to diminish that power in some way. So my question is, do you see a scenario in which issuing RFPs would delay some, some action that need to be taken immediately?
Yes, I do. You know, as councilman, sorry, not councilman, Attorney Washington already pointed out, if we were to do it at this point, it would obstruct operations for the bond work that's being completed now. But also, yeah, it is, it is taking away some authority that the mayors have traditionally had in the past. So that's our interpretation for it, it would impact it.
And I use, I use a little, a little rhyme that I used to say when I, in my day job. You know, if it's good enough for the goose, it's good enough for the gander. And I'm saying that the way things are going, and I had this conversation with a couple of council people, that you will be evaluated just like we will be evaluated in four years. And if the citizens of this city is not pleased with our, our performance as elected officials, they can make that change.
Absolutely.
They can correct whatever they feel like is not going right, and they deserve that opportunity to do that. Now, at the same time, we have to, we have to be, you know, vigilant in our duties as well. But I do not want to address something that ain't broken. And I don't want to, I don't want to create a hardship for an action that need to be taken in waiting on competitive bidding, or, which, which you understand, and I got, like Ms. Washington said, you know, the process starts way before his, his hour, our, our, our monitor, so.
Yeah. I would, councilman, I would just like to add a part that I didn't read in the, in the Code of Ordnances, it says, competitive bidding, however, shall not be required in the case of contracts for professional services and for services for which the rate of price is fixed by federal or state authority authorized by law to fix rates and prices. And we already talked about the state authorities setting those code, I mean, setting those prices for us. And even, we just got to be careful with the individual instances, if it's something that we don't like about it, or even if there was any personality conflicts on changing rules like this, because it does impact the office, not the particular instance. And it impacts the process, not the particular instance going forward. So, you know, we don't want to be, these aren't decisions that should be made quickly at all. You should do a holistic look on the process, on whether or not things like this should be changed. And at this point, as you pointed out, nothing has been broken about this at all, so.
Well, I would reserve any other permission until the author of this legislation is here tomorrow, we can discuss. As long as for introductions, but I want, you know, again, I, I've been hanging around here a long time. I just didn't start coming down here when I was elected. That's why I take issue with some of the, some of the changes, especially when it comes with the public right to address their elected officials. We've had people come into this audience and called us everything but a child of God. And guess what we did? We took, we sit, we sit here and took it, okay, because that's what we, that's what we do. And that right, for them to do that, or the right for the mayor to make certain, certain decisions without, without this body feeling like we have to oversee every, every, every dot in space that happens. You will be accountable, we will be accountable, but I, I don't want to be a part of any, any way trying to, trying to impede or to, to take away anything except for good government. We want, we want good government.
Yeah. Well, thank you, councilman, I welcome accountability, so I appreciate it.
It will be, okay. Ms. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Bradford. Councilman Flur. Mr. Chairman, thank you for recognizing. I just want to give a little bit different spin. Yesterday, I had great honor to go over to Councilman Bradford's church, where they celebrated 146 years anniversary. And I was very impressed with the bishop and with the pastor. And I thought about what a friend told me a couple of days ago, he said, "We try to keep our preacher poor and humble," and by meaning they didn't pay him very much. And I thought about this proposal here that we're talking about. I had a business, a successful business, but if I had required an RFP on my legal, I probably wouldn't have got John Settle, because John Settle charged a little bit more than what I could possibly pay. But you always have to sometimes pay a little bit more to get somebody that's credible. You know, you can, you, in the end, it'll cost you. So Mayor, I appreciate where you're coming from on this. RFPs may be good if we're buying tires from, the city two years ago spent $625,000 for tires with Gateway Tire, and that was a staggering amount that we, but when you go back and think about police cars, fire trucks, water and sewer, we probably do spend that much, $625,000. But this is for professional services for people that got to know what they're doing. And so I appreciate it very much, Councilman Bradford, where you're coming from.
Thank you, councilman.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Flur. Councilman Booch?
Like Councilman Bradford, I'm not going to speak too much on it, because I would rather that Councilman Nicholson be here since it's his, his ordinance. I just have a question. The bond, the State Bond Committee meets every month, right?
Correct.
So if this was prolonged, or if this did pass, which I'm not saying it is or isn't, we could apply in May, is that, is that right?
We could go to the May meeting, but then it does affect the timing that Barbara gets money to continue to produce schedule.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Which, just to add, which also impacts, remember, the Department of Justice watches our progress very closely as well, so that's another implication of it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. That's it. And Ms. Jones, would you proceed?
Under Section D, ordinance on second reading and final passage, number 79, is notifying Union Pacific and other interested parties of the city engineer and director of public works through the office of the mayor are authorized to begin the process to reopen vehicular access to Lake Street from Commerce Street to Seaport Discovery Center, including reopening vehicular access to cross over the Lake Street Railroad grade crossing. Ordinance 17 is amending portions of Chapter 26, Article 5, Division 10 of the Code of Ordnances, city of Shreveport, Louisiana, relative to the creation and establishment of a solid waste enterprise fund. Ordinance 19 is amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana 2019 Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 20 is amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana 2019 General Fund Budget. Ordinance 23 is to amend and reenact portions of Chapters 26, 74, and 94 of the Code of Ordnances of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, relative to a solid waste collection fee. Ordinance 26 is to revise Article 4, Division 3A of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordnances relative to the duties and responsibilities of the deputy chief of police.
All right. Ms. Mosh?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Butler?
Still left from Booch, I'm sorry.
Hi, first, it's Lake Street. The person who sponsored that legislation is our predecessor, and it, that piece of legislation, I kind of think, I think it needs to go away and be replaced with something, but I don't know what we need to do, so. Mr. Art, can you help me out here?
Are you saying, I'm sorry, would you ask your question again?
Yes, sir, I'm just not sure what we need to do about that, because based on the conversations we've been having, I guess we can vote on whether or not to open it or close it tomorrow, but there's just more to that situation right now, based on the conversations we've been having in the planning and infrastructure meeting.
One thing that you could do is to vote it down and start all over.
Okay, then, gentlemen, I would like for you to consider that being the way that we move with this, and if you have anything to add, I guess we can talk about it now or tomorrow. But I, I plan to vote it down, and I'd like to urge you all to do so as well. And the other thing is, we're almost done here, but the metaphor we're working with is about geese, and that's all y'all get for the rest of the day. You said goose and ganders, so all y'all get for the rest of this meeting is geese. No fruit, you can't have any fruit, you can't have any boats, any trains, you can't have geese. But, but back to the task at hand. have geese. But, uh, but back to the, to the task at hand, yeah, that's, that's right on Lake Street.
Uh, the first one, uh, 79, which has been lingering for a minute.
Ordinance 79.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, uh, two, two, uh, two issues I want to, I want to mention. There are several requests for additional personnel. Deputy Chief of Police, engineering, and so forth. And, uh... I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure if we, uh, if we, uh, if we're in a position to move on these items. I don't know. Uh, uh, any other, before I give my remarks, any other council members have any reservations about any of these?
We might have a member to say what you're going to say.
Well, I, I think that, uh, the only one that I've really, well, I've questioned both of them. I just, you know, I see the division chief, uh, for what, you know, for, uh, for the engineering department. I, I see that as a good thing. We have some issues with spending in the consent decree. And city engineers told us that this position is needed. I, I'm very conflicted on it right now. I don't know which direction I'm going to go, because I just hate for us to be in such a financial state, but we're, we're creating a $170,000 position. But having said that, if it saves us money, then we probably need to do it. Now, the Deputy Chief of Police position, I think that basically what it's wanting us to do is change the job description of the Deputy Chief of, Deputy Chief of Police. Um, I, I'm not necessarily opposed to changing the doc, job description. However, I am opposed to filling that position until the mayor, um, picks his police chief. Um, and I think Chief Raymond does need some assistance. And I think the CAA position has been filled or in the process of being filled. So, maybe that'll alleviate him some. And, uh, you know, Chief Smith came to the Public Safety Committee meeting the other day and is very competent and knows the department. So, I feel like that we're, we have the leadership we need. My encouragement is to defund that Deputy Chief position just until the mayor makes a decision. We, we have a test coming up in May for police chief, and we have the Deputy Chief position, uh, test coming up in April. So, it's going to be July before we're able to really make a good decision on that anyway. Uh, I'm concerned. I don't want us to get into a, um, an issue where we've got, um, Chief Crump coming back, wanting his job, because realistically, he could. And the mayor and I have discussed that. So, I just think that if we just wait on funding that Deputy Chief position until July, I'm not trying to take the mayor's authority away to appoint that position or change the job description. I would just like for us to postpone it and maybe defund that position or not fill it until, um, until we get, uh, the police chief that the mayor's chosen and getting that he or her confirmed. Um, and I don't think that's, that's too much to ask. I just think it's just kind of a, I think it's, it, it makes sense for the new police chief, whoever that may be, to be able to make the decision on who his deputy's going to be. So, that's my two cents worth on it.
And I, councilman, I'd just like to respond to that. On the record, last time I told you that my priority was the operations of the Police Department, uh, and that if, you know, um, I wouldn't compromise that for, for taking out one of those particular positions. But after you brought it up and after we spoke about it, I've talked to Chief Raymond, and, uh, we, we evaluated the impact that it would have over the few months that you just, you just listed. And we don't think that it'll compromise operations. So, uh, considering the financial situation of the city, we, we will not fill that position until, uh, after a permanent police chief is, um, you know, named. So, we won't be filling that position. And Officer Angela Willis has taken over the CAA position currently and is assisting Chief Raymond. Oh, she's here, as a matter of fact. Yep. She's, she's in the audience, as a matter of fact. Um, so, she's taken over the CAA position and is assisting Chief Raymond, uh, with the duties of Chief of Police.
Now, is the CAA, is that a civil service position, or is that just, so, does she have to take a test? Is there a test for CAA coming up, or?
Well...
Chief, I mean, I'm not trying, and it's hard to see you. I'm looking, trying, trying to go behind them.
He's hiding.
Yeah.
I'm used to sitting my back to the wall.
Yeah, exactly. Me too, me too.
Officer Willis, can you come up as well, just to introduce yourself? Thank you.
Go ahead and introduce yourself first and last.
I'm Angela Willis, and I'm the temporary CAA, actually.
Okay. Nice to meet you.
Can you give how many years of service, a little bit, a little bit?
Sure. I've got 21 years of civil service with the Shreveport Police Department. I've worked in several different units. I actually started as a dispatcher before going to the police academy. But I've been a police officer now for 19 years.
So, Chief, have you called a test for CAA?
We, a, a test was requested, not by me, by the Civil Service Secretary. Civil Service Board refused to call for the test. Their argument is that there is still a permanent member of that classification, which is me. And as long as there's a permanent member, they didn't feel it was necessary to have a test.
Okay.
So, technically, uh, you know, if I, if I, if, if another person is selected as permanent chief, I am the CAA. I will go back to that position. If I were selected as chief, then there would have to be a testing and interview process. So, Chief Willis is filling up. A provisional appointment to the Chief Minister of Assistant during the time period that I'm the provisional Chief of Police.
So, there is no active list, then?
There is no active list. It expired, uh, last month, actually.
Okay. That makes, that makes sense. So, I mean, you've got to do what you've got to do. So, I, I understand that. So, uh, and, and I'm not trying to, uh, I think the mayor and I had this discussion. In no way am I trying to impede the operations of the Police Department or put more on you. I just would prefer to have the Deputy Chief chosen by whoever the permanent chief is, or if Chief Crump comes back, or if you stay, I would like for them to have that input. So, that's, that's the only reason I oppose this. But, uh, I, I believe, I'm glad you got somebody in there to help you, and, uh, we'll support her any way we can.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Councilman Flur. Fuller, Fuller.
Um, I'm, as, as pertains to the police chief situation and the CAA and the deputy, just happy to see that all of that is working in accordance to protocol and procedure. Yippee skippy. Um, but as far as the engineering position, I would like to encourage all of you to consider, uh, saying yes to that or voting yes on that, because I don't think that our city engineer would be asking for this if he hadn't looked at, was everything from all, all angles. And I think that we need to, that part of being good stewards of, of the funding and the budget means putting someone in that position that can be a good steward for those projects. Um, and those are big projects. So, I hope that you all are, are leaning that way. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Brad.
I mean, I was still, I was still at the floor, but I was yielding some time. But now, I'm going to give some time to, to the Deputy Attorney.
Assistant.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I did want to clarify, and I believe Councilman Butcher did touch on this, but the, the ordinance 26 to, uh, for the Deputy Chief of Police, it is not, um, filling the position or not filling the position. It is only a clarification for the duties. Um, and it's just distinguishing between a routine absence as opposed to a, a longer vacancy of a position. And it's just kind of aligning our code with what is already allowed under civil service law.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
Can I? So, I guess it gets back into the whole deal that, are we going to be in the same position we're in right now if we have an extended leave of a chief? So, that Deputy Chief may, we could put in a provisional chief and have a Deputy Chief and a CAA and a chief. I mean, we could be back in that position again if we change the wording of this. I mean, Mayor, I, I yield to you as far as what you want us to do here, or what you suggest for us to do here. But I think that gets back to the whole point that I'm going to, is that can that debt, can we put a timeframe on there that that Deputy Chief can serve? Uh, the precedence was set with the Fire Department. I just hate for us to get into a position, two years down the road, and another council have to be doing this, that we've got a, you know, a provisional chief, a chief, a Deputy Chief, a CAA. We're getting back into that, that whole issue.
Yeah. And councilman, we can work on the, the wording. Uh, but I, I agree with you that we don't want to repeat this. I'm pretty sure most, you know, council members as well agree with this, that we don't want to repeat this. So, however, the wording needs to be to be more consistent. Um, then that's what we need to, to pursue.
It's my, uh, it's my understanding, um, the, we've had outside civil service council look at this wording, and that is, um, as well what they have recommended. And it's my understanding that the Fire Chief that you're referring to, and that, the way that works, is slightly different than this situation.
Okay. Mayor, would, would you be opposed to, to postponing this until we look at it a little bit longer? And, I mean, since we're not going to be filling the position right this second anyway?
Yeah. We can, uh, you want to take it in your committee, in the Public Safety Committee?
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
And then make a recommendation out of your committee?
Yeah. Or, or withdraw it, whichever way you want to go, and then put it back on closer to when you have a, we can postpone it, I get, what, what would you suggest?
I think the city attorney would like to speak.
Yeah.
But our buttons are not working right. Sorry.
My button, the only thing.
Yeah. The, the only thing, uh, that this would be doing is just clarifying the language. The way it is currently written has presented issues for the Police Department in reference to civil service duties, um, specifically to that position. It's created some confusion, and it's not accurately reflecting what the city is doing and what the purpose is for that position. Um, it does not require that the position be filled at any particular time issues, so that when the position is filled, that the duties are more in line with what the city is using that position for, and clarifying it for a purpose of civil service and Civil Service Board.
Right. And I, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, I don't want to be in this position again, where we've got a provisional chief, a chief, a deputy chief, and a, and a CAA. I, I would like for us to look at this and make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do. I understand it's a wording deal, but if you read what, and I read the civil service job description, it's pretty, you know, it's, it says that he will or she will serve in that position in the absence of the chief. And I, I see what we're trying to do, but I just want to make sure that we're doing this where we're not paying $500,000 a year in administration for the Police Department if we don't need to, if that Deputy Chief can fill in for, uh, you know. So, I, all I'm asking to do is just if we could just postpone it and look at it a little deeper, and maybe we can meet and talk about it, or bring in your independent counsel, whoever the, and, and talk about it. That's all I'm asking.
That's fine. And just, uh, just let me know. And I can, Nicole Buckle and Joe Woodley were the outside councils that we were using for purposes of that. Uh, they work with police and fire. And so, whenever you're ready for a meeting, just let me know. I can get them to go.
Maybe, maybe we could schedule next month another Public Safety Committee meeting and have all parties involved there and talk about it there.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Does it have to wait to, uh, does it have to wait till next month? It's not, nothing that you all can discuss?
Yeah. I mean, we can do it now.
Yeah. I, I don't want to potentially impede anything with public safety either. So, I, if, if, if you all can discuss it something earlier than that, then I think that'll be, uh, most efficient.
That's fine.
All right. Uh, there are no table, legislation to be removed from the table. Mr. Thompson, is that correct?
No, sir. We don't have any.
Okay. No other ordinances? We have one property standards appeal?
Okay. This is a return case, uh, 495 Fern Avenue. Uh, this is the garage here. The owner has cut down a couple of trees on the property. She has also removed the roof from the structure. Um, her contractor is basically doing it by hand. So, we just want to let him continue to go ahead on and keep working on it.
That's your recommendation?
Postpone it till next meeting. I have some movements, Chairman.
Right. Okay.
Councilman Bradford, we, I was going to move that we would postpone it to, to, uh... Are you suggesting any length of time?
No, since, uh, Councilman, Councilman Nicholson isn't here, we can just postpone it till next meeting.
Can't we just do it tomorrow?
No, we'll do it today.
All right. Well, I second, but I, I, with a hiccup, but I, I... I think that motion carries with six. Carries with six. Thank you, Mr. Green. No ABO, no BC. Mr. Thompson, are there any other appeals?
Uh, there are no other appeals, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any reports from officers' boards or committed? All right. Mr. Thompson, the Cooks report, please.
Uh, on April the 9th, the United Way will present a presentation on their 211 service. And we received, uh, appointment letters, uh, from the mayor concerning the following Shreveport Airport Authority, Dr. Benjamin Foster, uh, and Mr. Kenneth Morrow, and Attorney Lori Graham, the Downtown Development Authority, Ms. Candice Batiste, Mr. Lloyd Brown, and for the Assistant Director of Property Standards, Mr. Mortimer Harris.
All right. Councilman Fuller?
Um, well, I don't really see too much of an issue with, um, the appointee, at least one of them from the DDA, from the DDA, because I, I know her personally. I'm concerned that we're not following the statute. Um, the statute for this appointment from the state, I think, was back in maybe 2010 or 2004. I don't remember. But it's that the council is supposed to put forth a list of five names that the mayor chooses to from that list. I just wanted to bring that up, so we can decide how we want to proceed about that.
I'll, I'll review that with the city attorney. I thought that, um, well, I was instructed that this was at the pleasure of the mayor, like all other appointments. But if there's state statutes, then we'll review.
Thank you.
And address tomorrow.
Councilman Bradford, is that... No, that's not old, Mr. Chairman. And I, I have some additional comments, but I, I wanted to ask the mayor regards to, uh, the airport authority appointments. The airport authority appointments, I'm sure you know by now that the council have gotten feedback.
Oh, yeah.
From some current, uh, members, who feel like their, uh, their commitment to the airport, when they accepted the, the appointment, that they was given a timeline, a time, a full-year term. Uh... My understanding is, I haven't confirmed it, that they have asked for an Attorney General's opinion. I know the city attorney has ruled that the mayor has the privilege of, of, uh, making these changes. But my understanding is that there has been a, a, an attorney, a, a submittal to the Attorney General for an opinion. Are you, do you know that that's true?
Yes. I'm familiar with that. And I've heard that as well. I mean, I haven't called the Attorney General's office. But I mean, in our background research, we looked at legal precedents, and we looked at former Attorney General's opinion.
Yes.
As closely related to the same situation as possible. Uh, there's some specific opinions about port authorities and other mayoral appointments that says it's at the pleasure of the mayor, and it doesn't matter about the particular timeline, uh, unless there is, in the absence of a state law behind it. So, that's the reason why this particular case is different. But we know for a fact, there is no state law minimizing our authority with airport board appointments. So, the timelines can at any point, uh, be disrupted because a mayor decided to appoint who they wanted to appoint to this particular board.
I'm gonna, I, I sat in a meeting on last, on last week for four hours. It was a civil service board meeting for four hours.
God bless you.
The only problem was I, I didn't have lunch before I went. So, I, but, but, but my point is simply that, after the meeting, after the meeting, uh, the, uh, the member who was in question, uh, said he's gonna, he's gonna file, uh, action against, against the board for their action. There's a member of this board who has said that if, if, if we move forward and, and replace her, she's going to take this action against the count, I mean, this city. Now, and I'm going to speak more, more, more broader on this in a minute, but my point is, Mayor, uh, now, I'm going to ask the council, what I'm going to do. Do you have a problem with us, uh, postponing these, the appointments of the airport authority until we get an Attorney General's opinion?
Uh, yes, because there's some work that needs to be done at the airport, including the new leadership for the airport. Um, you know, our current interim director, Tom Jones, only had a specific amount of time he could give me, uh, in that interim position. So, we need to find leadership for that airport. Uh, and as has been covered in the news very thoroughly, uh, that airport board has to assist, well, actually, they are the ones that nominate an airport director. So, I need, um, that airport board in place to help me.
But the airport board is not out of place, Mayor. But the airport board is not out of place, Mayor. The airport boards is not out of place. The airport board, the airport board serves until their replacement has been confirmed.
Yes.
So, so there, so nobody has been confirmed, so the board is still intact, is that right?
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Okay, so I'm saying there's no, there's no interference, but you just don't want this board to be a part of the process?
No, it's not, that board, that, well, I'm ma, I'm making my appointments because I would like, you know, my appointees to serve on the airport board, which falls under my authority as well.
No, I'm saying, and I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I researched and saw what you saw, but I'm saying, but if somebody has actually filed a, an attorney, for an Attorney General's opinion, I'm saying, would it, would it be prudent for this body to wait until we get that current opinion?
And, and I'm telling you, Councilman, it's not necessary, and the law, you don't always find exact cases when you're looking for legal precedent, and I'm telling you, we can provide you with Attorney General opinions that are very similar to this, that allow the mayor to exercise that authority, which says at the pleasure of the mayor and make their appointments.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me, let me add another, another component to the equation. The lady said she was gonna sue us, okay? And I'm saying, to avoid being sued, like we were being sued in a previous meeting, delaying it for two weeks to give us a chance to re, review the Attorney General's opinion, the current Attorney General's opinion, would, would, would that be acceptable to you?
Yeah, and Councilman, I'm telling you that it wouldn't. I ran on a platform of progress and I don't, like, shy away from legal battles when we know we stand, we stand on solid legal ground. And this is where we, we've done our research and we stand on solid legal ground. If we, trust me, if, if I stopped making decisions every time we were threatened to be sued, the city government would come to a screeching halt. So, this is an example, I don't, we don't need to say, oh, she said that she'd sue us, we need to back down on this. The airport needs a director going forward. You all, right after the election, said that we need to be pursuing international airport status. Well, until we get a permanent leader at the airport, our airport can't, can't go forward.
Okay. And I'll, 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 I'll suppress my, my comments only to the fact that as a, as a, as a council member, I would prefer seeing the Attorney General report, okay? Now, that's my personal opinion.
I respect it.
Okay, and I'm just saying, again, that, that the, the four-hour meeting at the end was centered around the fact that somebody in the, somebody in the meeting said it was a circus. This meeting was a circus. Now, he didn't say it was a circus because there was clowns there. He said it was a circus because it appeared that the, the issue could have been worked out prior to the, prior to the meeting, prior to that confrontation, you know? So, it's always good, the best war you fight is the one that you have to fight, so we, we try to resolve things and issues before they happen. Now, again, if you know my history, I'm not afraid of fighting either, and I don't take threats or intimidation lightly as well, but if there's an opportunity to be clear, then I wanna, I wanna have that opportunity. So, so, but I'm just saying that my preference is that I would like to see the current Attorney General's opinion. My position is that the board is not out of compliance because the new board members have not been confirmed, and the, and the, and the way, and the way the ordinance reads it, that those people serve until their replacements are confirmed. So, I'm just saying what I'm saying, but...
Yeah, Captain, Councilman, I completely understand what you're saying, I respect it, and I mean, I can give you some more examples off the record, but I mean, the one that you just referenced with the, the civil service board meeting you sit in for four hours. Again, if things are disrupting the operations of the city.
Yes.
Or, again, pushing the city forward, then those are fights that I would very much encourage you to, to stand with me on, to make sure that we are doing what's best for the city and not, you know, cowering to, to threats.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I, 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 I'm finished, but I will have, like, have additional comments at the end of the meeting.
Councilman Flur?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for recognition. Councilman Bradford, are you familiar with Percy Jones Jr.?
I'm sorry?
Are you familiar with Percy Jones Jr.?
Yes.
Do you remember back in the day where Jones versus Beard, the lawsuit that he filed blocking Mayor Beard from removing him from the airport authority?
I'm not...
Well, he had a fine lawyer by the name of John Sell representing him in that case. And it says that, if I may, Councilman Bradford, would you allow me to share this article with you?
Please, please.
In The Times, it said, "The dispute, dispute moved to the city council chambers, where a councilman voted to table the action on airport authority appointments until the issue is resolved. I asked the Attorney General to give us a clearance on who has the authority to appoint and remove from the airport authority, City Councilman Roy Kerries is said. Jones, the airport authority's vice chairman, had questioned Beard's power to replace board members before their five-year terms had expired, a right offended by the administration." Hearing on Jones' court action is scheduled, it says there at a date in Kettle District Court. And it said Beard, the two were political opponents in last fall's mayor's race, but Beard denies that this is her motivation. Instead, she said she's removing Jones, a lawyer, to, to achieve a sexual and professional balance on the board. And she announced her intention to also replace airport authority members Pete Harris and Johnny Brock, whose terms are expiring. So, we, we do have a case there, only problem with that case is Mayor Beard chose Councilman Bradford to settle that out of court.
No guarantee.
And, and, I mean, Mayor Beard settled it, and so, you know, it moved forward without coming to a final conclusion in the district court. Just a little bit of information there, boy. I hope that makes you rest better tonight.
Let the record show that Mayor Beard was not my cousin.
Yes, sir. Just point of information, City Attorney's Office has not applied for an AG opinion on this issue. The AG opinion that has circulated is a AG opinion that came out from the former Mayor Keith Hightower's administration, dealing with a similar issue, so I just did one thirteen. Any, me or anyone from my office has applied for an AG opinion.
But you did, you, you did issue an opinion that the mayor was, 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 was in compliance with authority to do this?
Yes, sir, I did, based on my review of the applicable statutes ordinances, and also on, based on my review of that opinion that I just referenced, that came out under Mayor Hightower's administration.
All right. Councilman Boochi?
So, Mayor Hightower's administration, was that specific to the Shreveport Airport Authority, or was that just an overall blanket?
I believe, I don't have it in front of me to reference specifically. I believe it was, but I, I have to...
An overall blanket?
No, I believe it was more, more specific, but I have to review it, I don't have it in front of me to commit that.
I was, of course, we get a lot of, a lot of letters and emails, and this has been second only to the trash fee, and not to beat a dead goose. This is, this is what I, this is what I've told two, two of the members that are, that are being removed, who both, by the way, live in my district. And I told the mayor this the other day. My, my stance is that I would like to see us take as much political aspects of these boards out of, out of it as possible. I would like for them to be able to finish their terms, if at all possible. I served on a, on a government board before, and I know how much work goes into it, and how much blood, sweat, and tears go into it. However, having said that, I also see that the mayor would like to put his choices in there, and I, and I don't disagree with that. I think we fundamentally disagree that we should let the term end, and, but that's, that's, you know, he's the mayor. I told the mayor this, and, and I told both of the, both of the, the members that live in my district that have contacted me, I would prefer, like Councilman Bradford, to wait for the Attorney General's opinion to come, wherever it came from, or wherever they're getting it, it'll be an Attorney General's opinion. I don't think it hurts us. Actually, we don't even confirm these people until April the ninth, anyway. So, hopefully, we'll have an AG opinion. The ones I've requested in the past have taken about two weeks. So, I'm not into litigation. I, I wish that we could have settled the civil service issue before it got to a point where we're going into a lawsuit. Every $20,000, $15,000, $60,000 gets us further and further away from that goal of having a reserve like we all want and what we're fighting to do here. So, if we can mediate this, like Mr. Settle was able to, and maybe we need to bring him in as a consultant on this as well. If we can mediate this prior to it going to court, I'm all for that, but I am 100% behind keeping these people in their positions until their term is expired, and I believe one expires pretty soon, anyway. But, if it comes back and the AG says that you're well within your rights to do that, then, then I'll support whatever you want to do. Thank you.
Councilman Bradford, I'd just like to add a little bit more of the merit on the record. Two of my appointments, actually, one has an extensive history in aviation, he's a pilot himself, and the other is the number two of Metro Aviation, one of the largest companies in Shreveport here, and has a great deal of aviation experience as well, and I'd like to have that kind of experience on the board as they're making a decision on who is going to be the next airport director. So, I just, I, I didn't say it last time, but I do want to add that to the record.
Now, Mayor, listen, I, 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 you have made some very, very good appointments, both in your administration and as well as boards and commissions. I, I, I don't want to debate you on, on the quality of people that you brought forward. My issue is simply, and, and I would, I would challenge anybody around this table to have served on more commissions and boards in this city than I have. I, I think I, I think I can, my, my record is documented.
You got me beat.
I'm documented on, and this is, this is the issue that I wanted to at least bring to your attention. And I've never been replaced, I served my terms, but when you commit to service, you, you, you consider it, and you give it, you give it, you give it a commitment by adjusting your lifestyle. You adjust your, 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 your whole persona, as well as how do you, how do you schedule, meaning the commitments of serving on boards? And usually, usually people, you know, again, again, give, give that commitment by adjusting their lifestyle, adjusting how they do things, and so that they can meet these, these board commitments. And they usually do it understanding that they're gonna serve at the end. Now, again, I think, I think, I think Mayor Beard, when she got elected, she asked everybody to send in their resignation letter of all the boards and commissions, and, and she accepted the one that she, that she wanted to accept and didn't accept the one that she wanted to continue. So, I mean, I, I understand, but I don't remember how the outcome was on this board. But my point is simply that if people give commitments to serve, and they want to serve, and there's no, there's no, there's no mitigating circumstances to say they have done a bad job, they, they should serve, or, or give an opportunity to keep serving. And, and when you get resistance about me being replaced, either, you know, I mean, I don't know, because they think there are ulterior motives. They think, they think there are ulterior motives for, for, for why, why they want to be replaced. I, 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 again, I'm a very strong advocate for the power of, of the authority of the mayor, but if, 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 if that, if that, if that authority is being misplaced, then I think it's something that, that, that needs to be, again, considered, but at the same time, I have not seen the Attorney General's opinion from the previous incident. And, and I'm just saying that as well, I know a couple of, of the individuals that are, that are currently serving, and they are, in my opinion, very, very, very good citizens. I mean, there's another term that, that elevates good, but they are, they are, they are very astute citizens of this city, who have given not only in the capacity of serving here, but, but they have given their resources and their time in helping to make this city a better place. And, and whenever they start ringing bells, they're like they're, that this was not done on merit, but it was done with ulterior motives involved, then it's something that we, I would like to pay attention to, and say, okay, if the mayor has this authority that has been, it's been documented by the Attorney General, then, Mayor, I'll vote 100% of the time to, to assure you that, 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 that support is always there. But I'm saying, and it may be by the time this vote come up that, that we do have that opinion, and I would support the opinion with your authority, having that authority. But I'm just saying, just as a caution, because, because of the, because of the, the letters and the emails that we've been getting from people and their supporters, saying the mayor is just doing this for this reason, or the mayor is doing it for that reason, I, I want to be certain that, that is, that you have the, and again, I think, I think you do, but I want, I want to see a fresh, a fresh opinion, and I hopefully will see that before the time come to vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Attorney Creo?
Yes, sir. If I could just piggyback from the point of information, Councilman Boochi, you asked me specifics about it, I just pulled it up. That particular opinion was in reference to the Port Commission, the issue in the opinion was with regard to essentially a, a, a specific area of the statute that creates that particular board or commission being silent on removal, and that was to what my analysis and opinion spoke to. So, if the council would like, I can forward also not only my opinion that I submitted to Councilman Nicholson, but also this, this particular opinion that came from Mayor Hightower's administration. But again, there is no pending question with the Attorney General to be expected from anybody from my office.
In, in the opinion that you have, and I'm not looking at it, but I saw it, doesn't it say something about with the approval of the city council in there? The mayor can remove them with the approval of the city council?
No, sir, that was not my interpretation.
I think it says that somewhere in there, and let me see if I can pull it up on the email I got. We can, we can move on if I find it, but I, I thought that somewhere in there it says with the, the mayor can remove them with the approval of the city council. And that, that, the Port Commission, and I, I don't want to say apples to apples, because I was told I couldn't use fruit, but it's, it's a different, it's a different animal. I mean, you know, the Port Commission was created by the parish, by Caddo Bojer Parish, City of Shreveport, City of Bojer City, they have representatives from each one. The airport authority, though, is, is different from what I've been told. Now, I'm, I'm not a lawyer and I hadn't seen it, but I do remember reading in there that with this Port Commission deal, that it was with the approval of the city council, and if I can find it, I'll, I'll forward it to you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Again, I, I will, after the meeting, I will forward my analysis that I sent to Councilman Nicholson, as well as this attachment, everyone's, you can, you can know specifically what I talked about.
Here, here's, here's what it says. "We conclude based upon RS 331415A quoted above, that the mayor is empowered to remove the City of Shreveport appointees from the Port Commission with or without cause, where the removal is confirmed by the city council." That's what the, the AG, I'm...
That's to refer.
That's the opinion. It's, it's, it's under there, it says where, where the removal is confirmed by the city council. It's the last, one of the last sentences in that opinion that you're looking at.
Yes, sir, but that applies to just about every appointment with regard to approval by the city council. So, the issue, and not to be combative, but the issue was not whether or not the city council had to confirm it, but whether or not you needed cause to remove somebody, somebody from that particular commission prior to the, to their term.
I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is where the removal is, so if he, if he wants to remove these people before their term is over with, it would have to be confirmed by the city council according to this AG's opinion.
That would be for anybody, but the, but the question specifically in this case, as well as the airport case, or the question that I received, was whether or not somebody could be removed pre-term, and my answer was yes, because that particular legislation that created the body does not address removal one way or the other. And so, unless it prohibits the mayor or the city council from removing somebody pre-term, I was of the opinion, I still am of the opinion, that it can be done.
Right, they can be removed, but it's gonna, he's gonna have to make that recommendation to the city council for approval to remove him.
Right.
Is that right?
And that's an all...
Councilman, if I can intervene for one second, that your confirmation of my appointees will effectively...
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. I agree with that.
Councilman Flur?
Mr. Creo?
Yes, sir.
In regards to the...
Ms. Krieger, in regards to the three airport nominees, what does the ordinance charter say about residence requirements?
I don't have that specifically in front of me. If you would allow me to pull it up and send that to you in writing, I would do that.
As to best to your knowledge, these all are citizens of the City of Shreveport?
Who? The specific-
The three applicants here.
I don't have any information about those individuals.
Okay. Would you please check on that for me?
Yes, sir.
Respond to me within 24 hours if you can.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Bradford?
Mr. Chairman, my remarks will be given at the additional comments from the city council members.
I just briefly wanted to add that I have to applaud the mayor on one issue, and that's on the threat of litigation, someone suing or whatever. I don't care if somebody say they go sue me, sue the city, sue whatever. If I feel like I'm right, I can't back down off of something simply because somebody said they go sue. I'm just not, that's me personally. I'm that type of person. I see where both sides are coming from, but I had to add that part in there. Just because somebody said they go sue does not mean we should back down off anything. If that's the case, you're right. It'd be just all kinds of impeding happening with the city and our legislation on what we're trying to move forward at this point. Councilman Bradford, you are up to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I think that's unequivocal with all of us. As city representatives, we cannot refuse to do our job because of any threats that may come our way if we feel we are right. But to incur expenses is another thing. I was starting off speaking on the legislation that will be approved tomorrow, and I want to first thank Councilman Florrie for attending church with me yesterday.
I think he got a thousand dollars I could give in my church.
Wait a minute, say it again. No, no, no. His participation in the worship service was more valuable than a thousand dollars. But anyway, I want to thank him for that. I also want you to know that I'm going to support Revolution 23, Artness 23. I'm going to support Artness 23. But I really want to say that a month ago, we received the Alice Report. And the Alice Report says that 56% of the residents of Shreveport live on or below the poverty level. 56% of the citizens of Shreveport live on or below poverty level. The statistics from our census reveal that between 58% and 62% of the citizens of Shreveport are people of color. 58% to 62% of the residents of Shreveport are people of color. And I asked a couple of council members, I say, if we took out our white citizens and only left people of color, what would the poverty level of Shreveport be? If the average is 56%, if we took out all of our white citizens, which makes up roughly 40% of the citizens, out of the poverty scope, what would the average of the poverty of black citizens be? Now, I got different amounts, but we know it'd be high. We've lost a lot of our economy in our manufacturing jobs, our blue collar jobs, General Motors, General Electric, Lucent Technology, Go battery. And I estimated that to be, over the last 15 to 18 years, to be over 20,000 jobs that paid a livable wage have left Shreveport. Our economy has been at a stagnant. We know that we have challenges in regards to the budget and the revenue that we are generating. That's why we have such low in reserve, and that's why we should be looking at ways in which we can modify our expenditures to what we actually are. I use as a, in my house, or I use as a premise, let's live within our means. Let's live within our means. So to incur additional expense when we can avoid it is a part of eliminating some things. If we could avoid being sued, let's avoid being sued. If we can avoid anything, let's avoid it unless it is detrimental to our positions as elected leaders of this city. Compromise is a good thing. Compromise ain't a bad thing, always. Now, I said that in the fact that we're going to be forced with some decisions in the coming months. We know we have to do some things to generate additional revenue. We have to look at, I mean, I think each councilman has a priority on what they need to look at. Raises for sanitation workers is one of my priorities. And I think, and the commitment is that if we pass a fee, my people, I left it, if you remember, I left the last council meeting early so I can go to a meeting to meet with my constituents. And they said, we understand if something has to happen, the new monies has to be found, and new revenue has to be generated. So they say, okay, we can go with that. I say, okay. Now, additional priorities and additional monies to fund additional employee raises is going to be the challenge. It's going to be a very serious challenge. And I spoke to the mayor last week, and I said, Mayor, let's look at stages. Let's look at how we can show the residents, show the citizens of this city, that we are indeed going to be progressive, we're going to be responsible in all aspects of our operations. And Mayor committed, I guess, that he's going to look at this budget, he's going to look at where he could save, but we all know that our number one cost is human resources, and that's the toughie. So when we start talking about, we start talking about adding other expenses to the citizens of this city, which 60-plus percent are people of color, who are, at the minimum, 65% are living in poverty or on the poverty line, to go after them for more funds, it would be reverse Robin Hood. It would be taking from the poor, giving it to the rich. And we can't do that. Not in my district. My district is the poorest district collectively. And I'm not willing to sacrifice somebody having to decide whether they're going to get a medicine, or they're going to have to pay for something else. And somebody mentioned, you know, the water, the young man did. I mean, water is a natural resource. When you buy water, you're not buying water, you're buying a plastic bottle. So to penalize people with a water threat to cut off their water if they don't pay their water bill or their garbage fee bill is an issue where they're going to have to not be able to take their medicine, or they're going to have to do something. So I want to lessen that, lessen that as much as possible. So I'm just saying all that says that as we move forward, council members and mayor, we got to be considerate of the least of our citizens and what they are capable of. But we do have responsibility. And I'm going to reference again, Jackson, Mississippi, and Little Rock, Arkansas. Okay? There's going to come a time, if we don't be prudent in our governance of this city, we're going to be forced to make decisions that we all would be seen as being harsh and unpopular of doing. I'm supporting this $7. I hope you will support it as well. Let's make some progress. Let's show some advancement. Let's grow our economy, and then we can move forward, make these seven years, these next four years, I'm sorry.
I'll put that in your script, Bobby.
Make you seven, me too. But just make them as productive as we can. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, and I appreciate your time.
Okay. All right. I did have a question, but I'll bring it up tomorrow. I think that's it. If there's, Mr. Mayor, you have anything else you want?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mortimer Harris is here. He's listed as a confirmation for Assistant Director of Property Standards, if you'd like to speak with him.
That was part of my deal on tomorrow, but since he's here now, yeah, I would, no one disagrees, I'd like him to come up.
Good evening. Mayor, first of all, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity, and also I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Green for selecting me to be his assistant and to the council. I'd like to thank you in advance for your vote. Just a little something about me. I have a BS degree in management from Southern University. I worked 26 years with Lucent Technology. I have 17 years with the City of Shreveport. I spent most of my time in community development, which I had 10 years. I started off, at that time, it was called code enforcement. That's why I got my start with the city. And I came in as a management assistant. I worked there, and then I moved from, I'd say, property standard up into the Housing Bureau. I worked there for totally 10 years with community development, then I moved to engineering. I've been with engineering for about seven years.
So you're currently with-
Engineer.
Oh, you're with engineering?
I'm with engineering. I started my career with the city in property standard.
So you're very familiar with the operation of property standards?
Very much so.
So coming back to property standards, what do you feel would be an asset to you being Assistant Director?
One of the things that, working along with Mr. Green, one of the things that I visualized, what I found out, most of the citizens do not understand the ordinance for code enforcement, for property standard. And one of the things that I would like to do is get in the community and explain where they do not understand, and maybe we could get rid of someone that's black.
And I agree with that. I think a lot of time, we put too much emphasis on technology, on social media, and there's a lot of people, a good percentage of people, that does not engage in social media, don't even have computers in some of these poor neighborhoods and poor areas of our city. So you see them doing things like parking on grass and, you know, and not taking care of their properties, and because they, y'all did a sweep last week in Allendale, Cabro, AMOK. Come here for a minute. Let me ask you something. Can you hold one second? Okay. Give me, Mr. Green, thank you for coming up. Give me a sort of scenario of that sweep.
I believe we got about roughly between 500, 700 tires.
700 tires?
Yes.
Okay.
We made a couple of loads for trash and bulk pickup things that people put out and whatnot. We tagged over 100 cars.
You tagged 100 cars for what purpose?
Inoperable vehicles.
Inoperable vehicles.
Yes, sir. I don't have the police numbers, so I couldn't tell you that, but streets and drainage crew, they went from one end of pretty much MLK to the other end. They did right of waste. They did any necessary spraying that needed to be done. We wrote probably about seven court citations. Most of the numbers you should have, but it was a pretty successful sweep.
Okay. It was successful in you identifying violations.
Right.
But I call you to reference Mr. Harris's concern, that would it have made a difference if these people understood that they was actually in violation? Some of them did not know. Would you agree?
Oh, sure. Some of them may not know, but we don't just use social media. I attend meetings. I also have supervisors that attend meetings in your community. And remember, we have put out low-tech boxes similar to this in the David Rains Rec Center. We also have one for the new MLK CDC. Once it does open, we already got one made for it. So we're not just high-tech. We go to these meetings, we talk, we speak. So, you know, everybody's not going to come. I can't make them come, but we're trying to get the word out to them.
Okay. But you're not disagreeing, Mr. Harris?
Oh, no, 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 not at all.
That personal contact would also be an avenue to communicate with these people?
A whole lot.
Okay. That's all I'm asking.
Councilman Bradford, would you give-
Yes, sir.
-this person, Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Don't get discouraged, because they got a lot of problems up there at District A. Don't let him discourage you, because I wish we had just a little bit down there at District, because maybe property standards would get to come through and see us. But you stay strong.
Don't worry. I will.
And just keep doing what you're doing.
Just for the record, when I started with the city, I started working with Karen, so we have a relationship, and he knows what I would bring to the table.
All right. Thank you for your service, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you didn't mention my cousin.
Well-
All right. If there's nothing else, then this meeting is adjourned. Mr. Norma, Gary Norma.